Hello, we're going to get started. Welcome all and thank you for participating in the DES public hearing today. Please know that this hearing is being recorded. Let the record show that today is July 13th, 2022. The time is just past 2:00 PM and this hearing is being held at the DES Concord offices, first floor auditorium at 29 Hazen Drive, Concord, New Hampshire. Please know that my name is Mary Ann Tilton and I serve as the Assistant Wetlands Bureau Administrator for the DES LRM Wetlands Bureau. And I have been designated to serve as the Presiding Officer for this hearing, Robert Scott. First, a few housekeeping items. As a matter of public safety, I'd like to point out the emergency exits. Please make yourself familiar with your surroundings and the available exit routes. Pathways to exits must be kept clear at all times. In the event of an emergency, please evacuate the building quickly and calmly. The hearing will be continued at a later date and sufficient notice will be provided in accordance with EMVC 200. Restrooms are located down the hall, you may have noticed as you came in, down to the right as you leave the building. The New Hampshire Department Environmental Services Wetlands Bureau here and after NHDES is holding this hearing pursuant to RSA 42A811 Roman numeral five, eight and eleven, Roman numeral five, and the rules ENVWT 202, ENVC 205.03, to receive public comments on the pending applications submitted by Ford of Claremont proposing to dredge and fill 25,815 square feet in pollustrin wetlands to construct a commercial automobile dealership and service facility with associated parking and display area. In addition, the project proposes to temporarily impact 1,750 square feet during construction. Compensatory mitigation is proposed as a one-time payment into the Aquatic Resource Mitigation or ARM fund within the Lower Connecticut River Watershed Account. The location of the proposed project is 17 Lane Ridge Road, Claremont, tax map 165, lot 14, owned by Lane Ridge Realty LLC. The NHDES file number is 2021-2551. On June 24th, 2022, the notice of this public hearing was posted on the NHDES website. The notice was also distributed via first-class mail to the applicant and interested parties. Notice of this public hearing was also published in the Union Leader on June 26th, 2022, and the Eagle Times on June 25th to 26th, 2022. We look forward to receiving your comments today. So I'm going to review the agenda, just so we know the orderly process for receiving comments at this hearing. So following the opening remarks, which I'm giving now, we will hear a 20-minute presentation of the proposed project by the applicant Ford of Claremont. After that, I'll provide a brief introduction before public testimony. I will call on each individual wishing to testify who has submitted a written name, address, and affiliation card. That's required by rules. In order to ensure an orderly hearing, I will call on each individual participant separately. Prior to speaking, each participant must come forward and speak at the podium. Please state their name and affiliation, whether you're speaking in favor, against, or providing a neutral comment on the application. Please focus your comments on the topics related to the wetlands application. Please be respectful of the time, so that we can hear everyone who wishes to speak. After all the public testimonies received, I will provide a closing statement to adjourn the public hearing. Prior to the conclusion of the hearing, a party may request the record be left open for a specified length of time for filing of information not available at the hearing. Additionally, if the Presiding Officer determines that there's information that's relevant to the subject hearing, the Presiding Officer shall designate a specific time for the record to remain open to receive such information. So now we'll go to the next phase. I'm going to be introducing, we're going to be hearing from the applicant or their agent, which will provide a 20-minute overview of the project. After that presentation, I'll call on each individual to present their public testimony. Thank you, please come forward, and please state your name and affiliation before you speak. We're also hoping to post this PowerPoint online shortly after the hearing on our website, and you'll see that the slides are individually numbered and I've asked the agent to reference those for those who want to make further comments. So if you're taking notes at the hearing today, please make note of that.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Good afternoon, everybody. For the record, my name is Chad Brannan. I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. With me today is Ken Robinson, who's a wetland scientist with Fieldstone Land Consultants, and also Christian Gomes, who is the landowner and applicant for this project. Mr. Gomes owns Lane Ridge Realty, and that is the subject, they're the owner of the subject site that we're talking about today. As was stated earlier, that property is located at 17 Lane Ridge Road, currently is comprised of 3.3 acres of land and has frontage along Lane Ridge Road and Charleston Road, as depicted on slide one that we have before you now. Mr. Gomes also owns the adjacent property, which is occupied by Ford of Claremont. That property is owned by Tag Realty LLC, and that property is comprised of 13.2 acres of land. Both of those properties have either been submitted and have an, or I should say, the Ford of Claremont property has an active wetlands permit currently, and then we are proposing a wetlands permit for the Lane Ridge Road project. The site location, as depicted on slide one, shows that the properties are both situated at the intersection of Lane Ridge Road and Charleston Road. And what we wanted to point out really on this slide is just the surroundings to this property. As you can see, along Charleston Road, there's a lot of commercial industrial development. That area is zoned for that, along Charleston Road, and there's a fair amount of infrastructure and improvements that exist along that town right away. Along Lane Ridge Road, the first property on the left, as you enter that road, is actually a commercial industrial property. And then as you extend back along Lane Ridge Road, it actually transitioned into a residential zone. And so that's important because that is, you know, those are details of consideration that have been reviewed locally through an extensive review process and have had impacts on the layout for this project. Going to move on to slide two, and this slide shows the current design that we have presently. It's our latest updated plan. This design is the result of a very thorough review process that has really spanned over local review, state review, and also some federal review. This project ultimately started with communications with the Army Corps of Engineers. We transitioned to the state and then ultimately went locally and then back to the state for the permitting process. We believe this plan provides for a good balance between development, mitigation, and avoidance, meaning we've gone through a very iterative process of plan revisions. And the total proposed wetland impact, as was stated earlier, for this new dealership is 25,815 square feet. This is ultimately, again, the result of a pretty significant and detailed review through local, state, and federal processes. In the end, we believe the process, the review process, has yielded the best plan for this project. We think the process has been very productive. We've worked collaboratively through a number of revisions on many levels. It was improved locally, it's been improved on the state side, and we certainly have taken into consideration, you know, even a butter of comments and such along the process, through the process. This project proposes a major wetland impact in excess of 10,000 square feet, which is the reason why we are before you today. Although this is a major permit, this project does have different facets that, you know, distinguish it from, I think, many other projects. And what I mean by that is, you know, we have a permanent disturbance that we're proposing, but we also have a number of mitigation elements that we're proposing. There's parts of the property, or the adjacent property, that we've committed to be preserved into agricultural use, and then there's, you know, there's the development, which is really something that's sought out in this particular end of town through the city's master plan, which is ultimately why we were able to obtain approvals locally. I think the best way to articulate the process is to navigate through the revisions, the concessions, the overall proposal, and just to walk through, you know, really an outline of the permitting process. Now, you know, today, we're going to spend maybe 20 minutes reviewing a great deal of effort that really took place over the better part of a couple of years. And that's, you know, not to be taken lightly. A lot of time has been spent here, a lot of investment, and a lot of revisions in the right direction have been made with this proposal. We started this project, and moving on to the next slide, which starts, is titled "Permitting Process Begins in Pre-Application." This is slide three. We spent a lot of time with this project in the pre-application phase. We spent time in that phase with the Army Corps of Engineers. Ultimately, with a major project like this, they have the ability to take jurisdiction within 30 days of issuance of a permit, if we're successful in getting a permit. So we felt it was important to have discussions with them early. We also felt it was important to have discussions with the Wetlands Bureau very early in the process to determine the viability and the permitability of this project, because a lot of time, money, and effort gets spent working through this type of a process. So this permitting process formally initiated on January 5th of 2021. Communications and guidance were received from Army Corps of Engineers. That guidance was favorable after reviewing the site, the type of wetlands that were on-site, and the overall proposal for the site. The Army Corps of Engineers stated that this would obviously require a major permit. We would have to go through the state New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Wetlands Bureau to secure that permit. And we talked briefly about mitigation with the Army Corps of Engineers as well, and they felt, given the location, the surrounding land, and the area, that the ARM fund or the INLU fee mitigation would likely be the best proposal for the site. Upon those communications, we reached out to DES, the Department of Environmental Services Wetland Bureau, to review the project in mitigation options and measures. We also reached out to the local conservation commission to identify any potential mitigation projects that they may have ready. Because if we're able to line up projects, we may be able to help accomplish a local mitigation effort or a local project. Unfortunately, the conservation commission did not have anything online, so we proceeded down the permitting process. On January 8th of 2021, a submission was made to the Wetlands Bureau, and a pre-application, excuse me, a pre-application meeting was requested. On February 3rd of 2021, we had a pre-application meeting. The plan that's before you on this slide was the plan that we presented at that meeting, and we represented roughly 37,000 square feet of wetland impacts on that plan. Certainly, it was a conceptual plan, we had no grading done, we hadn't done stormwater management design, we hadn't worked through any local review process. So it was very preliminary at that stage. Feedback was received on the permitting process and the desired path, and ultimately, the feedback was very favorable when the parties of that preliminary meeting reviewed the project, the type of wetlands, you know, it's a wet field, it does get mowed, and, you know, reviewed a lot of the details. Overall, we received positive feedback relative to the proposal, and that's the reason why we moved forward with this project. That's a very important part of a project of this magnitude, because it's not to be taken lightly that we are proposing a major impact with this proposal. At that meeting, Mr. Rennie did say that the project was, you know, permissible as long as the appropriate details were provided, and we proceeded accordingly. Moving on to the fourth slide. After the pre-application phase, we entered the design phase. The design phase is certainly a phase where you spend a lot of time working out the details, figuring out, you know, how stormwater can be managed, how a site can be graded, working with local, you know, departments. But we kept DES involved, the Wetlands Bureau involved, and we did share, you know, a conceptual grading plan early on, because we wanted to make sure that we stayed active in that process. We wanted to make sure that we weren't deviating from a permissible project in that, you know, nothing was concerning to them. And certainly, it was preliminary still, because we haven't made a formal application yet. We spent the next few months working through local approvals. On March 21st, that's when we actually submitted the preliminary grading plan to DES. We submitted that plan to Mr. Rennie, and I believe Mr. Davidson also was part of that review. DES did make some recommendations, the Wetland Bureau did make some recommendations based on that initial plan. We had roughed in some stormwater management components, and they made it clear to us during that preliminary review that any stormwater management practice has to be located outside of the footprint of jurisdictional wetlands. They also requested that we incorporate some retaining walls on the Charleston roadside of the project to try to minimize wetland disturbances. They asked for us to prepare a wetland restoration plan for the temporary wetland impacts that would be required for the construction of that transitional area between the permanent and jurisdictional wetland area. And then they also requested that we submit, you know, formal erosion control and sedimentation control plans, along with construction sequencing, when we submit our final package to the state. Certainly, we had no issues with any of those comments, and we appreciated their involvement. Still appreciate, we still appreciate their. On July 12th of 2021, we ultimately completed our local review as we secured a unanimous approval from the Claremont Planning Board. That approval was for a project that had 39,200 square feet of wetland impacts. That process locally was a process we spent a great deal of time on. We worked through some revisions with city staff. We worked through fire department comments and revisions, police department review, and so that was a very iterative process. After completing that process, we filed our wetlands permit with the Wetlands Board in August of 2021. That was our formal submission. This design took into account all preliminary comments that we received from the Wetlands Bureau and contemplated 39,200 square feet of wetland impacts. The increase from 37,000 was ultimately a result of working out all the final details. We had to avoid a wetland area on the north, or excuse me, the southwest side of the site along Lane Ridge Road. That wetland area actually was a slightly higher value than the wet meadow in the front. So we made some modifications to the layout for that, which increased the wetland impacts out front a little bit. And then we also finalized the stormwater design in details, and we were designing a site to meet other state permitting criteria, such as the alteration of terrain treatment standards. And so that was the plan that we submitted initially to the Wetlands Bureau. Moving on to the next slide, which is slide number five. Yeah, wait. I think it's actually. It's fine. Moving on to slide five. We started the review process with the Wetlands Bureau. On October 7th of 2021, we received our first review, a request for more information. Department of Environmental Services Wetlands Bureau requested additional revisions be made to try to minimize and avoid wetland impacts along Charleston Road, along that side of the project, if you will. And we made some revisions. We ultimately proposed a more substantial retaining wall along the edge of the paved improvements. That revision allowed us to reduce the overall wetland impacts down to 37,000 square feet. And so we submitted a response to the Wetlands Bureau addressing the RFMI, which there were certainly additional details, but just to kind of give a broad brush overview, we submitted that on November 8th of 2021. Moving to slide six. On December 6th of 2021, the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services responded to those revisions, seeking additional reductions, and suggested reducing the paved area in front of the building and in front of the dealership even more. We ultimately met with the owner and applicant to review the request for revisions. And we took a hard look at, you know, some of the feedback that we received locally, you know, distance from, you know, hydrants to the building, separation to residential properties, you know, trying to balance all of these factors play, you know, making sure we're addressing stormwater requirements, making sure we have appropriate emergency access. And we still have to, all the while, provide a design that's viable for a dealership. We have to have a certain number of display spaces in front of the building. You have to have, you know, appropriate access and so on. So we met with the owner to review a lot of these details, and we came up with a plan to minimize the impacts further. And on January 5th of 2022, we submitted a revised plan to DES with additional revisions. The plan was revised to remove the entire row of parking that was closest to Charleston Road. And that reduced the wetland impacts by about 20% and brought our number down to 29,545 square feet. This eliminated, again, that front row of parking, eliminated a significant amount of display area. But we did maintain the retaining wall along the front edge of the site, which allowed for, you know, a larger reduction. And we made that submission to the Wetlands Bureau. Moving on to slide seven. On January 21st of 2022, we made another, we received another request for more information from the state Wetlands Bureau. At this point, we're well below the wetland impacts that we were contemplating during our preliminary stage. Again, we started at 37,000 square feet. We're now, you know, below 30,000 square feet and, you know, trying to work collaboratively on making reductions in site revisions while balancing, you know, all of the other features. DES's request for more information on January 21st of 2022 addressed a number of items. They were more detailed in their review on this particular request. They suggested moving the access point along Lane Ridge Road and removing two additional bays of parking or display area. It's actually a display area in front of the dealership. They also requested a function and values assessment. They requested documentation on the local approval process. They also requested stormwater and hydraulic connectivity detail and data. These comments were of concern because they were significant requests at this stage, significant requests. Many of these topics we had already addressed along the way, but we wanted to take another look at the plan, try to come up with a plan in a package that would be improved significantly. So we met with the owner, again, to review these comments. The owner of the property ultimately involved corporates, because this is a significant revision to the layout. These modifications would impact the design standards and would ultimately yield a 48% reduction in the display area over what was originally presented. So it's a substantial modification. This process took a little while to go through that evaluation, you know, try to look at what could and couldn't be done. And we were ultimately, at this stage, coming up with the best plan possible. This is the plan, this is the best we can do. This is, you know, what is, you know, we looked at, what can we do for other mitigation? What can we do for revisions? And ultimately, plan revisions were made, and we provided a maximum reduction plan that included removing an internal traffic aisle, relocating the access along Lane Ridge Road, as was requested by the Wetlands Bureau, and shifting the improvements back slightly on the site. We shifted them back, we reworked the parking area to the rear of the building to work around some jurisdictional wetlands at the rear as well. And we ultimately made a revised submission in May of 2022. The wetland impact for this plan was reduced down to 25,815 square feet, and we eliminated a row of parking, maintaining the retaining walls, and made some other site improvements along the way, such as drainage improvements, et cetera. Moving to slide seven. Along with that submission, we also. Sorry, it's slide eight. Moving on to slide eight. This one is entitled "Wetland Restoration." Along with this submission that we made in May of 2022, we also included some additional wetland restoration. The total impacts, again, for this new dealership is, or has been reduced to 25,815 square feet. On top of that, we proposed mitigation through restoration. And we did that on the adjacent parcel, the parcel that is occupied by the Ford of Claremont. And what we did is, along the front of the site, along Charleston Road, there are upland areas, kind of peninsulas that project into the wet field, if you will. Those areas total 9,118 square feet in size, and we ultimately decided to propose that we replicate wetlands in those areas. This mitigation effectively resulted in a wetland impact of 16,697 square feet, because we're creating new wetlands, offsetting, you know, some of the permanent disturbance. On top of that, we're still, all the while, proposing the mitigation through the ARM fund, the INLU fee contribution, which will provide financial resources to support the protection of higher-value resource areas in the region. So there's a significant amount of mitigation, you know, being proposed for this project. And that's important, because that's what we would consider the balance. It's what creates a good plan. And that's important because that's what we would consider the balance. It's what creates a good plan. Moving on to slide nine. This is a summary slide. So this slide shows an overall picture of the site. Which is hatched in, in red on this plan. It also shows the adjacent Ford dealership to the north. And so if you look at where we started and where we ended, we believe it's important. The initial review with DES through the pre-application process consisted of a project that was proposing wetland impacts. In the vicinity of 37,000 square feet. And through that period, at that stage, it was deemed as though it was a permissible project as long as we addressed all the mitigation components throughout. The final design is a design that maximizes avoidance and mitigation while allowing for the site to be developed into a, a dealership. In results in what we believe the least amount of impacts for this site. The impacts, the permanent impacts will be 25,815 square feet. This is a reduction of over 30%. It does not account for other mitigation factors. So it's 30% if you count no other mitigation factors. If you take a look at the other mitigation factors, such as the 9,118 square feet of wetlands that we're proposing to construct. On the adjacent lot, tax map parcel 16513. This mitigation effectively results in a net wetland impact of 16,697 square feet. Which is. A 55% reduction over the original proposal. And that doesn't account for the, the other component of mitigation for this project, which is. Proposed to be handled again through the ARM fund, which is the INLU fee contribution, which was recommended by. The Army Corps of Engineers and certainly appears to be the best fit for this site. This will provide again financial resources to support the product, the protection of higher value wetlands. Higher value resource areas in the region. This fee will be calculated using the larger. Square footage, meaning we're going to use the 25,815 square feet. We're not going to take credit for the wetland replication. So. What this ultimately. Means is that we're proposing mitigation far in excess of what is required. This is not a minimalization project. This is a, a project that is trying to find good balance between all interested parties. Because there's a common ownership between the two properties. The INLU fee calculation is actually going to be based on the combination of the already approved and permitted. Access to the Ford dealership and the disturbances associated with that. Which were 9,098 square feet. In addition to the 25,815 square feet. So the total. INLU fee calculation will be on a number approaching 35,000 square feet. That means that this project's going to provide. A lot more funds for the preservation of, of higher value resource areas in the region. That fee on a rough calculation and those details have not been finalized yet with, with the Wetlands Bureau. But that fee is going to be north of $150,000. In addition to these measures. My client is also committed locally to maintaining the agricultural field behind the, the dealerships. So there's a portion, that's prime agricultural land. It's mapped as that on the Claremont GIS. And that will be preserved. That's part of the reason why we're not extending that far back. Those residential areas are there. And, you know, we have to be a certain distance to the road in order for this to be a viable project, which is why we talked about this in great detail early on in the process. But there's some agricultural preservation, more balance. Again, we believe this project and the associated mitigation exceeds the standard requirements and in our opinion will benefit. All parties. There's. A lot of other factors that, you know, come into play with this type of a project. Approval of this permit will allow a development in a commercial industrial zone in the city of Claremont. Clearly, that's what the city wants. We got a unanimous approval. Before the planning board, unanimous. We worked through comments. We worked through department reviews. This is consistent with the city master plan. We will be sensitive to the surroundings. My client has put a great deal of effort into. Making sure that he's providing some separation and buffering to the residential areas. That's of interest. He's a neighbor to these people. It's a very important. That's been taken into consideration with this plan. This plan addresses all safety aspects. We have police and fire department support with this layout. It's a good plan, provides additional access to the existing Ford dealership as well. It provides improved access there. That site is actually, has safety issues that this approval of this plan will help mitigate. The alteration of terrain design standards have all been met with this project. We will certainly need to. Ultimately secure that permit as well if we're successful in obtaining this Wetlands Bureau permit. But we've addressed all of those design standards. We will not impact any flood storage with this design. Again, the proposal provides for mitigation in excess of the minimum requirements. We didn't even look at the minimum requirements. We didn't think, think that was the right plan. Trying to balance the feedback and the interests. This will be a good project for the community. We believe that wholeheartedly. In closing, I'll say that we have not taken this project lightly and the associated impacts lightly. And we certainly have not taken this permitting process lightly. I think we've spent a great deal of time working through a very productive ru- review process. We have met with the owner to make revisions on a number of occasions, significant revisions, significant revisions have been made. But ultimately, I think the review process has proved productive. This is the best plan. It's the best development for this site. It's the best balance of mitigation, we believe at least. And we think that. You know, we have support from other agencies at this stage. We understand through communications with the Army Corps of Engineers. And the Environmental Protection Agency that they are in support of this project based on the mitigation efforts and the revisions that we have made. That's important. That's what we strive for. We believe that through all of this, through this entire process. Again, we've presented the best project possible and we thank everybody for their time and effort to this stage. So thank you. Oh, yeah. My name's Chad Brannon. Brannon? Absolute.
The one thing that I wanted to know a little bit better about is the wetland. Can you please explain a little bit of a whole work, and I don't know if you were the wetland scientist, of the type and function of the wetlands and how you. Configured your design in relation to the relative functional assessment of the wetland?
It would be best. Ms. Tolan, if I have Ken Robinson, who's a certified wetland scientist from our office, answer that question.
Looks like it has three wetland areas.
Correct.
On the site. If you could just go through and explain those wetlands, what type they were. What their function was and how your design was impacted based on the wetlands function.
Sure. So the first wetland area we called out was to the west. And that area is the one that's been completely avoided. That's a prelustrian emergent wetland. Up in this area.
That's, that's the west along Lane Ridge Road?
Correct.
Okay. And how big is that wetland, do you know?
I believe it's just over 8,000 square feet. I don't have the number in front of me, but.
So that's a mark?
There's year-round standing water in there. It's lined with cattails and. Correct. Wetland area two is this area here.
So that's. East along Charlestown Road?
Correct. So that is the existing mode wetmeadow field. Wetland area three is right along Charlestown Road here. So there's a break between the two. That's what we can, I consider this area here what it would be if, essentially if trees. Had become established. Correct.
So tell me about that.
So that's largely driven by the shallow ledge throughout the area. Test pits that we've conducted have shown from this area then east towards Charlestown Road. Ledge is about two to three feet. So there's limited infiltration there. And there's a pretty. Low gradient, so there's not a lot of sheet flow. Ends up just becoming an inundated area. And you also have the. Impacts from the road drainage that come into here. And there's a culvert here. I believe it's an 18-inch culvert.
So as well.
Correct.
And so why did you pick that layout compared in terms of you're looking at the function? So that's why I'm asking you how you met 31110, which is asking you to use the results from your functional assessment to design your layout.
Correct. So based upon field evaluation. Identified a lot higher degree of biodiversity in this area here and vegetative diversity along the roadway. There was a longer sustained hydro period. Which created a better environment for plants like sedges and rushes to grow along here. Whereas that wet meadow is a rather monocultural grass field.
Looks like you found some toxicant, sediment toxicant retention functions, is that right?
Correct.
In wildlife habitat. That's for. EM1F, that's number one, that's the one you've ordered.
Correct.
And then number two, we met toxicant retention, nutrient removal and flood flow alteration. So how are we translating that?
So all of those components are addressed through our stormwater management plan. As Chad had mentioned earlier, we're not losing any flood storage. We are proposing infiltration. Under the pavement here in the upland area. There's also some treatment swales provided here to be vegetated.
And have you met with the alteration on that flood storage proposal yet for stormwater permitting? So I didn't mean to go back and forth.
No, that's okay.
The flood storage person.
Yeah, for the record, again, Chad Brannon, civil engineer with Field Snow Land Consultants. Yes, we have gone through an initial review with the alteration of terrain permit. They have provided comments on the project. And generally speaking, we would, we would consider those comments pretty regular, you know, routine. We don't see any issues with addressing flood storage. In fact. You know, our design calculations prove, and it's, it's, it's a duty for the project. That there's a, we're going to be a reduction in the rate of runoff leaving this project because of the infiltration that we're proposing. In upland areas with more suitable soils. So that's going to be a benefit on a flood control standpoint. So. That is one of the functions and typical functions and values of, of wetlands. We understand. And so we always take that into consideration during our stormwater management designs.
So one other question. Since you don't have your alteration permit, I'm sure you're aware, there's a new fish and game consultation process as of February that gets triggered.
Yeah, we, we've already gone through that. Yeah, well, in fact, the new fish and game regulation states that if you don't have any hits on threatened and endangered species. You do not have to do a wildlife study and, and fish and game review. So we don't have to do that on this project. But we did actually do a wildlife study on this project and we'd be happy to submit that for your review because. Prior to our submission, they were requiring wildlife studies. So we wanted to make sure that was done and that wildlife study came back favorable. Certainly, and, and as you, you, you may know, I'm, I'm sure, you know, people who are familiar with those maps are aware, basically any. Undeveloped land that's got, you know, continuity or consistency is often finds itself on that, on that map as high as. Ranking habitat, if you will. But that doesn't mean that it can't be developed and can't be developed appropriately and reasonably. And I think that this project takes that into consideration because we're trying to develop along the Charlestown corridor. And we're trying to preserve land in the back for agricultural that butts up to, you know, those, you know, woodland areas that are more. Appropriate and that's referenced in the wildlife report as well. I think it's approximately six, six or so acres. Yeah. And that's not, it's not being proposed as part of a mitigation component, but it's a local agreement that, that was made. Um, no, it's just, we just, it's a local agreement. That's what I, that's what I mean. Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll now take testimony from the public, the general public. And I have written cards here that I'll be calling on folks. So if you are sitting in the audience and you have planned to testify and have not submitted one. Please make sure you get us a written card so that we can call on you accordingly. So I'm going to call on James Kontos. I don't know if I'm pronouncing that correctly. If you could please come up here and state your name. And affiliation. One way or the other and your, for the record. I'd also want to encourage pursuant to ENBC 205.07. Provides, I will call on each individual to present their testimony. I encourage individuals who plan to testify orally to place their testimony in writing. And to submit such written testimony to the presiding officer prior to the close of the hearing or close of the record. Sorry. Thank you. Please come forward. And just speak in.
Thank you. I didn't get your last name. GILT, thank you. My name is James Kontos. I'm a citizen of Claremont. I'm a member of the Conservation Commission. And I'm a Claremont City Councilor. I do not speak for the Claremont City Council. I provided written testimony which I'll hand in, but I wanted that testimony to have a voice. We wouldn't be here today. They just moved the project back from the road. That was my main concern. I've been watching this area of development since I moved to Claremont in 2004. I don't know all of the reasons why the Ford garage was set back. As you can see, or in the previous maps, the Ford Garage, which is the adjacent property, sits back considerably from the road. It's a wet meadow, can be mowed, but not rutted. We have complained continually to DES that they cut it and rut it. Way back in 2020, I actually wrote to Mr. Christian Gomes, 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 and never had a response. So I, early on, I had tried to establish some sort of communication. In my written testimony, I said that the development does not conform to the Claremont City Code, Appendix C Site Regulations. The development does not conform to the Claremont Master Plan also. Under the Claremont City Code, under Appendix C, it says, we will provide for the safe and attractive development of the site. We will guard against inadequate, or we will guard, we are looking for adequate protection of quality aquifers and groundwater. The master, or the city code wants us to provide for the harmonious and aesthetically pleasing development of the municipality and its environments. What we're doing here is paving paradise to put up a parking lot. I don't see a need to pave, originally it was out to the road and now we've moved back. And we're talking about mitigation impact, which the math is all fancy. But nonetheless, we're paving over this wet meadow in the front of this proposed dealership. This proposed dealership is much larger than the existing dealership. Claremont City Code asks that we provide for open spaces and green spaces of adequate proportions. It asks that we include provisions as will tend to create conditions favorable for the health, safety, convenience and prosperity. Paving all of this wet meadow does none of those. The Claremont Master Plan says the city's beautiful natural areas, rural lands and history continue to be the foundation of its identity and these assets will be secured for future generations. We're not doing that. It talks about wetlands in, in the master plan. Wetland areas in Claremont are generally well distributed with concentrations along riverways and small catchment areas. So as we talk about the beauty of the city, you come into Claremont, it, it comes from an agricultural area, Charlestown to the south. And you come into the city and we run into a developed area. As the Ford Garage exists now, it's had this beautiful wet meadow, which actually enhances, as far as I'm concerned, the, the dealership. It, it's got grasses and cattails and unfortunately, one or two invasive species. In this Claremont Master Plan, we've got water resources goals. Protect and improve the quality of the city's surface and groundwater resources. Scenic areas, the scenic areas of a community are often the most cherished visual component. We just talked about the most visual. These areas add a great deal to the community's unique character. Scenic areas can include meadows and agricultural land, water bodies. The master plan asks that we create and adopt a watershed management plan to regulate land use activities that affect the quality and quantity of the city's surface and groundwater resources. Also, in the master plan, we've got a chapter called Community Use of Natural Resources, Open Space. Open space means any land that lacks human structures and meadows are considered open space. We want to preserve those. Anywhere in the urban area that is mainly grass, trees, shrubs, flowers, or areas designed to provide respite from pavement, buildings and vehicles. We want to do, we want to provide respite and continue. The New Hampshire, in Chapter Five, the New Hampshire Fish and Game Department, in cooperation with other agencies, organizations, individuals, produced the New Hampshire Wildlife Action Plan. The map that they generated lists the proposed development as having the highest ranked wildlife habitat. So there, there seems to be some contradiction between what was just previously stated and the information I have. And it says in the master plan, the city should consider developing individual management, management plans for each of the significant areas to ensure their long-term health and preservation. So that's what I want to do. That's what I'm looking for, is that we preserve this wet meadow. Let's take a quick look at my notes. I think the one last thing that I wanted to say. I, I, I've heard the term significant mitigation to the final plan. Significant mitigation is, is, is a perspective. To me, filling in this meadow and putting $100,000 to go to some plan where they may go help another area that I'm not going to see in this area that's being displaced. And, and you know, the wet meadow that exists in front of the Ford Garage, you're talking about building it up and making it better. But it's already fine, just to get alone, you don't, that's, that's really not a mitigation. I went to the wet meadow last weekend and just to observe. And I had a dozen red-winged blackbirds screaming at me. Get out of here. We have nests here. This is our home. Leave us alone, get away. What I couldn't hear was the voices of all the butterflies I saw, many, many butterflies, many, many insects. I couldn't see the aquatic life there. The salamanders, whatever. This is a beautiful wet meadow. Even cringing on it by mowing and it, it, it's being degraded and to pave it over when we can move that dealership back into the agricultural area, you know, preserving the agricultural area. I don't know, I really can't comment as to the importance of that. Hay field. But I don't see where this hay field is worth more than this wet meadow. Why don't we move it back, move the dealership back, preserve the wet meadow? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Do you want to submit something in writing? We're going to stick and provide here just one. Yeah, you can do it after if you want. Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to call on Eric Peabody. Eric Peabody here? Thank you. And please state your name and your affiliation for the record.
Eric Peabody, citizen of Claremont, also here representing the Conservation Commission. Didn't really have any written testimony to prepare. I will read my, my comment letter that I have sent in. I request that you deny the application for this project. This project is not a bank stabilization or road widening project where wetlands are impacted for the safety and benefit of the greater common good. These wetlands were known about during the development of the Ford dealership. Trying to shoehorn another dealership into a space where the limiting development parameters were already known and then claiming a hardship is poor planning. This application is solely for the benefit of a business to have visibility from Charlestown Road. The existing Ford dealership has plenty of visibility from Charlestown Road. The benefits to the proposed dealership do not outweigh the benefits that wetlands provide for the community and this location. Per rule, environmental WT 313.03A, so this is paraphrasing from, this is quoting from a letter. The department shall not approve any alteration of any jurisdictional area unless the applicant demonstrates that the potential impacts to jurisdictional areas have been avoided to the maximum extent practical. Why does this proposed dealership need to be closer to the road than Ford? There is more land to the west that can be used for this proposed development. Ford of Claremont owns both lots 16513 and 16514, which total over 17 acres of land with the Ford dealership occupying approximately five acres. The boundary lines of lot 16514 are not a limiting factor for development. They executed a boundary line adjustment to set the current boundary configuration and they can adjust them again to meet the goals for development without affecting this critical wetland habitat. That's essentially, so just, I don't understand why it couldn't be pushed back a little. I, I'd love to see some photos of the, the wetland to the southwest. I don't ever remember cattails or year-round standing water being in it.
You should know whenever you did the first project.
I did, I did. Yes. I know. Yeah. Yeah. So that was it. I just, the, the value of that 8,000 feet versus the, the value of the contiguous wet meadow that is taking drainage from Charlestown Road in the front.
And did you also provide a letter, is there a letter in the record already?
There is a letter from the Conservation Commission, which I think I will let Gary Dickerman speak to. I'm not sure that all of the comments or, or concerns of that letter were addressed.
So your testimony?
No.
I think, yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dick. And so Mr. Dickerman, the next up will be Scott Hinkley.
So Mr. Gary Dickerman. Thank you.
Gary Dickerman from Claremont and Chairman of the Claremont Conservation Commission. On behalf of the Claremont Conservation Commission, thank you for the time and effort you have given this application and our letter of intervention. A few observations regarding the site plan. The existing Ford dealership is situated back from Charlestown Road and seems to be doing a brisk business. The applicant owns plenty of property to the west of the proposed new dealership, which is what Eric just referred to, which could accommodate a revised site plan. Value of the wet meadow to be filled and paved over has been marginalized because of the other commercial development along Charlestown Road. This is not valid if one considers the following. The impact of habitat reduction related to the existing ecosystem, and I would refer to yesterday's Valley News article entitled Endangered New Hampshire Birds Are Under Watch. And I would quote from that article. Biodiversity has been declining both globally and locally. A 2019 report found that North America has, has lost one in four birds in the past 50 years, or 2.9 billion birds. The 2020 Audubon Report found that of New Hampshire's 190 bird species, 80 are on the decline. Human impacts such as development and destruction of habitats are driving much of the loss. That's both from the article. Also, the city of Claremont is comprised of 28,520 acres. Based on the city's 2013 natural resource inventory, wetlands consist of 558 acres, just under 2% of the total. Given the constant threat to our environment and its ecosystems, we urgently need to preserve any wet meadow, marsh or wetland, regardless of size or presumed insignificance. This urgency greatly outweighs the need to display and sell more automobiles. Finally, the Claremont Conservation Commission is by no means anti-business. We recognize the need to broaden the tax base and we welcome new business to our community. We would respectfully ask that new businesses would likewise welcome the opportunity to promote environmental awareness and join our effort to protect our remain, our remaining fragile habitats.
I'd like to call on Scott Hinkley. And the next up will be Christian Gomez, or Gomes, I may have said it wrong.
My name is Scott Hinkley. I am in a butter to the proposed project. And I don't know where some of you have been, but I have owned that property for 17 years and looked down on it. And the wildlife infrastructure that you talk about and so forth, I haven't seen. What?
Yes.
I live right to the south side of Lane Ridge Road.
Correct. Pardon me.
Okay. The wet meadow that you refer to, since I've been there, has been rather a mess. The cattails that are there now endanger life safety with the fact that people pulling out of Lane Ridge Road cannot see properly to the north on Charlestown Road. For years, I've had to contact the city of Claremont to have that cut back so that it does not cause a safety issue. I would like to say that Mr. Gomes, as, as a neighbor, has been excellent. He's been cognizant of the fact of moving into a community and wanting to be part of it. He has been excellent in that any of our side of the road or anything asked anything of him, he does his best to accommodate it. As he has put forth in his people that have been working on this project for him, I see nothing but good things for it. And I think it's an awful shame that it has to come to this type of a hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hinkley, for your testimony. Now I'm going to call on Christian Gomes. Sorry. You are, okay, you're, I'm sorry I said your name wrong, I pronounced wrong. Okay, and so next up is. So the next person I have requested is Fran Casal. Is that pronounced right? And I also have next up after that is Ken Robinson. If you want, let me know.
Good afternoon, my name is Fran Casal. I'm from Lebanon, New Hampshire, and I'm in favor of this project. this project. I've had a couple of instances where I've dealt with, and I'm, I'm certainly understanding the concerns of conservation commissions as they are needed in our state. I have been a resident of this state for forty-seven years, okay? And one of the things that I appreciated the most about this state was that we were reasonable, okay? And there are certain things that go beyond reason. And whenever there is business development in an area where there's conservation interests, you're gonna butt heads. This is what's gonna, it's a natural occurrence. And what happens is, we tend to blow the whistle way too early. We stop, we don't look at the projects properly. We don't communicate with one another. One of the best things to do to sort through problems is to communicate. What Mr. Gomes has done on this property, since I've known him in two thousand seventeen, is he's enhanced this property. He's made this property aesthetically more pleasing. He's kept the cattails there. He's done some mowing of the grass. The birds are flying in and out or whatever, but it's, it's not a major stopping ground for Canadian geese on their way north or, or on their way south. This is a highly industrialized area of the Charlestown Road, and there were properties north of this proposed project that were built back in the seventies that I believe were wetlands, that the water is running down to this property or is contributing to it. So he's doing, and, and, and his engineer has gone through a litany of tests. We have the Department of Environmental Services here in Concord. We're blessed with it. They are filled with capable, knowledgeable, competent people. They have, they, they've gone through a litany of, of exams over this project in the past year. So it's taken a year. They've looked at it. Their staff has, their, their staff has looked at it. They've, they've seen the given and the take that's going on here. This is good for Claremont. Mr. Gomes has been good for Claremont. He doesn't even get thank yous from people in Claremont when they should get thank yous from people in Claremont. But this has been tested. They've reviewed it. The, the, we've, we've given back as much as we can give back. It's done, in my view. So at some point, you have to use reasonableness, okay? And this is beyond reason to postpone this project any further. That's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, next up, I'm not sure, Ken Robinson? No, you're declining? Okay. And then I have, um, John Tuttle. And then the last part I have is from Chad Brannen, if you wanted any closing remark.
Good afternoon. My name is John Tuttle. I'm from Acworth, New Hampshire, in Sullivan County. Lived in that area since about nineteen eighty, eighty-one. And I'm very familiar with the site of this proposed wetlands work. My concern is more with the process than particulars of this project. I generally agree with the remarks made by Conservation Commission members from Claremont. And I do believe that DES should deny this permit. I think this is where we get to one of the process issues. In the presentation, uh, at the beginning of this hearing, we heard that, uh, I think in January of two thousand twenty-one, then Director of the Greney Wetlands Bureau formed the applicant. This was a formidable project. Set in motion, uh, a nearly eighteen-month process, and now we're at the point of decision. I don't know if this is standard practice, when applicants come before DES, that you have a preliminary sit-down meeting and sort of go through the rules and the statutes and come to a determination about whether or not applicant reasonably precede the expectation that they may receive a permit, spending considerable time and money and effort putting together a proper, adequate application. It's sort of hard to imagine a position DES would be in today to deny this permit application. Clearly, the applicant would have recourse to appeal. If they had been told by DES at the outset that this was a formidable project, maybe we'd have solid grounds for saying in appeal that this is the issue, turning it enough. Having watched other larger projects, because frankly, even at one acres, now considerably less than one acre with the modifications, this is, this is not a enormous project, that's for certain, when you look at some of the other projects pending in the state. Multiple acres of wetlands. I would be very concerned to think that those larger projects went through the similar process and where applicants were assured that they had a formidable proposal before the state. But to jump to another area in terms of process, I believe that there will request made that this hearing be held in Claremont area. Like to follow this, indeed, request of Wetlands Bureau that this hearing be continued. Perhaps the hearing be held in Claremont. The fact that this many people have come down from Sullivan County. Twenty-minute drive, maybe indicates there is interest, the weekday, the workday. Strongly urge the department that are holding the hearing in Claremont to accept this information and the process used, both by the applicant and by the state, to the community itself. This area of Claremont, on the Charlestown Road, it's sort of a southern entrance into the city, has been developed fairly rapidly in recent years. Redeveloped, in some cases, is becoming somewhat congested. But one of the few areas which actually remained quite attractive was to the west, as you were heading north into the city. Open space, the wetlands. And also heading southbound on the Charlestown Road, it gave you a nice sense of open space in what has become really, in my opinion, overly congested area in terms of commercial development. Um, I'd like to have the hearing record be left open for a reasonable period of time. I did notice, excuse me, I did notice something that was brought up in one of the questions that you asked. That had to do with, um, end expedi of the application, which is going through in terms of highest priority. You jumped out of that. This is high down. So this here that I didn't, yes. I would like to think that this project is not going to happen, but to happen, I would like to, yes, consider, applicant consider this, excuse me. And that may already be the case. I have not read the petition posting. I think that's really about it. Something to keep in mind really is keeping away the best use here. I believe the, uh, the existing dealership, um, at Claremont Junction is near another environmentally sensitive area in Claremont. I think that might be one of the alternatives to consider is to, in that, for the city, where remediation really is needed. That's some serious environmental issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, next up is Chad Brannen from Fieldstone. Um, and after this, I'm going to take a short break before closing the hearing. Just wanted to make sure in case anyone else filters in. And I'll take a five to ten minute break, and then we'll close the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you again. Uh, for the record, Chad Brannen, civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. And I just want to touch on many of the topics that were raised and questions that were raised. What is confusing to me on some levels is how documents can be taken out of context. Um, for example, we had to go before the planning board in Claremont to obtain the site plan approval. This project meets all local regulations. We wouldn't have an approval. Master plans are written as a guiding document to write regulations. So regulations are written to follow the master plan. So if I'm before you stating that we have a plan that meets all the regulations, we meet the master plan. We meet it. We have to. I can't have an approval from a city and not have a plan that doesn't meet the master plan. That's the job of the planning board. With that said, things can be taken out of context, and I don't disagree with some of the comments. For example, open space. Regulations are written for open space. We had to do open space calculations on this site. The site exceeds the open space calculation requirements. It made the master plan. Protection of groundwater resources. That just so happens to be what the, kind of the purpose of the Alteration of Terrain Bureau is. They look at water quality, protection of groundwater resource. The background of that is a certification to the four oh one Clean Water Act. We have to get that. We're going to meet that requirement and hopefully get that permit for successful through the Wetlands Bureau on permitting. So we meet that criteria. The concept of wetland impacts, it, that's why we're here. That's why we started this process early in a collaborative discussion whether this was a permissible project. My client would have never authorized this process to go forward if we didn't think that this was going to be approved through a permitting agency. We would have never done all this work, wildlife studies. All the studies have come back favorable, every one of them, done by professionals that are in their ex, area of expertise. And no offense, but not necessarily people volunteering their time, trying to do the best they can to follow a master plan or a guiding document like that. We're following rules, ethics. We believe wholeheartedly this plan meets all of those criteria. The state establishes mitigation criteria that is, you know, when all else fails, acceptable, meaning like the ARM fund and INMUI. The location of this building is a function of its surroundings. The Ford dealership is not safe. It's too far off the road, doesn't have appropriate emergency access. The fire department has commented on that. That's why they wanted this building to be within two hundred feet of the hydrant. That's the intersection of Lane Ridge Road and Charlestown Road. We don't get to always pick where things go. It's a balance. Everything's a balance. We're trying to find the right plan for the right situation. This is a wet meadow in large part because of an elevated culvert along Charlestown Road. The properties to the north have certainly impacted wetlands over time. And it's not to discount the wetland, but it does impact the wetland complex. This is not a pristine wetland complex. The money that would be contributed to the state through the ARM fund may protect a higher-value wetland. That's the intended goal, which will certainly address many of the comments. We're also proposing to do mitigation right up the street on the adjacent property. That's in excess of, of a requirement, but it will also provide additional areas for wildlife. There's a lot of talk about wildlife. This is a mowed field. It's a mowed maintained field. It's not what's being presented. The field will continue to be mowed. There has been many complaints to the state about rutting. The state has done many inspections. None of the inspections have yielded rutting, that I'm aware. And I've talked with Mr. Blasarjic in a number of times. It's just not happening because the client has bought, my, the client has bought the appropriate machinery to not leave rutting while being able to maintain that field. And it just so happens that maintaining that field like that creates a safer condition at the intersection of Lane Ridge Road, which was, you know, stated in, in testimony earlier. We do think this is a good project, and I appreciate everybody coming out here, but none of you were at, well, I shouldn't say that. Only one of you were at the public hearing that was held at seven PM, noticed locally in two locations for the site plan review process. We didn't hear this testimony locally. We could have, there's an opportunity to appeal that decision if you don't like the results of a site plan approval that happened early in the process. That was, again, a hearing held at seven PM in Claremont. And the, the, I just think it's important that there's a process locally. This has been a long, lengthy process. People have been given the opportunity to address concerns. We've tried to address them through, um, local review. We've also tried to address them through RFM with the, you know, with the state. And clearly, there is a difference in, in, in opinions relative to the wet field. I just want to make sure I touch on all my notes, so bear with me here for a minute. The the location of the building, um, you know, there's a lot of talk about the location of the Ford building, and it's proven that that's not safe, and it's not functioning appropriately. In fact, Mr. Blasarjic stated such in an inspection that he did in, in, to us, about how it's difficult to navigate around that building. Well, the fire department and, and the emergency response personnel had similar concerns. There's an issue with that current design. We're sharing the access, which I think is, you know, another, um, mitigating component in that we're minimizing component in that we're trying to minimize, you know, impacts to those wetland areas. But we're providing for connectivity and trying to solve, this plan will solve some of those issues. You can see on the plan that, that the property actually narrows as you go back. And the wetland along Lane Ridge Road is, is of higher functions and values. That's my understanding of the opinion of the wetland scientist and the gentleman that did the wildlife, um, study. So the design balance, again, balances those items in. When it comes to this, you know, highest of the, the Hampshire Fish and Games map for habitat, if you read the map, I mean, we run into this all over the place, on local review, state permitting. If you read the map, it clearly states that it was not done at a level of detail that is intended, you know, for plans like this. I bring that up only because you have a Ford dealership right next door. You have the industrial cor, commercial industrial corridor along Charlestown Road. We have a wildlife study that we'll be happy to submit for the record that shows that this is, you know, this area is not, this corridor is not highest and best for wildlife habitat. It's, it's a lar, it was prior to the, you know, Ford dealership being built. It was a very large contiguous area of land, and that's what, that's what those maps detail. Areas of contiguous land, large tracts. Then there's a lot of them in Claremont, if you look at that map. Because there's a lot of areas that, and someone said that are adjacent in Charlestown, and as you come into Claremont, that are agricultural, large fields, open areas. That's great. But I think it's being taken out of context here, and it's actually, um, you know, I don't think it's, it's accurate. The wildlife study that we'll submit for the record doesn't support that, and certainly, you know, the surrounding areas that are developed don't support that. I mean, you have Lane Ridge Road there, you have the Ford dealership, and then you have a lot of other development along. You have the Ford dealership and then you have a lot of other development along it. It's not truly a corridor of, of any kind at, at this point. We believe that we've gone through the right process. You know, certainly I think everybody here has done a good job. I think it's resulted in improvements to this plan. And, and I say that, you know, I've done this for over 25 years and I do believe that a good review process leads a good, yields a good plan. And this has been a very thorough process. It's spanned across, you know, many people. There's been changes in personnel on, on the state level. There's been some changes, I believe, on a local level. We've heard a lot of comments, a lot of testimony throughout the entire process. And we've, we've definitely worked hard and diligently to address that. But we think that this plan meets not only the local requirements, we think it meets the state requirements. We think we've done the maximum extent possible to reasonably avoid this wetland. And that's what the, the law, I believe, or the regulation states. I mean, we think we're going above and beyond on the mitigation element in an effort to provide good balance. There's still going to be a wet meadow in front of this project. There's still going to be drainage connectivity. There's still going to be the wet meadow on the other side of the access to the existing dealership will be larger as a result of this project because of the proposed mitigation efforts there. There's still going to be a place for the wildlife. There's still going to be a place for a lot of the concerns that have been raised. We're trying to seek balance through a reasonable design and that's what we think we've done with this application. So I really appreciate everybody's time and thank you again.
Thank you. That's all the folks that I've had sign up to testify. And I'm going to take a five minute break and then we'll come back and close the hearing. Thank you. You've made representations that this is mitigation. So if we can understand the size, the significance, and the duration of that for the record, that would be good. Also, I did ask a number of questions about the functions of the wetlands, the relative functions. And I want to make sure that you could address that during the 30 day record period as to the functions wetland two provided. I think you said that was lower function because of shorter hydration. But right near there is a shallow infiltration basin, I believe, that's being proposed. And there's ledge nearby. So if you have anything that would answer that, maybe your A O T consultation plans or something like that, which you said that you met with alteration of terrain on some of these flood storage containment, that kind of relates to how you're analyzing the wetland function as well. And also, there's been testimony by the applicant about the pre-application meeting held with D E S. If you have any notes or emails or plans that were submitted or considered by D E S as part of those historic meetings, if you can submit those to D E S as part of our consideration for the record, that would be helpful. Additionally, there's been a lot of opposition today. And it will be helpful if the applicant can respond to some of the comments that were made by the public opposing the project during the 30 day record. And I'd like folks to realize that there were some statements made about the town master plan. Please be aware that the department does not, the standards that we follow in our review relate to the state law, R S A four eighty two A, and our rules are standards. So that's what we'll be considering and evaluating all of the public comments in terms of our decision. So seeing that we have heard all the testimony here today, we are going to be keeping the record open for an additional 30 days to receive additional public comments and some of the clarifying comments I've specifically requested from the applicant or their agent. So the record will be closed at 4:00 P M on August 12, Friday, August 12, 2022. So we invite you to submit those comments via email. There's a special website address that was set up. I think it's in the public notice. Wetlands application public comments at D E S dot N H dot G O V. Otherwise, you can also submit your comments in writing. And those can be at D E S twenty nine Hazen Drive, P O Box ninety five, Concord, New Hampshire oh three three oh two dash oh oh nine five. Or I did receive at least how many items today in writing? We received two letters. If there's anyone else that has a record, a letter they'd like to submit, we'll stamp. And we have one other one that would be great to stamp in for the record from the council counselor. So we want to thank you today for making the trip to Concord. We realize that it's a travel, but it's definitely greatly appreciated. And want you to know that any photographs, maps, written narrative, or any other history or background that you want to provide about the wetlands, the associated surface waters, or all the things that D E S considers in terms of our review are welcome. And we will consider those in making our final decision. So thank you for coming and have a great evening. Take care.